We've got, I have sign up sheets that the clerk has given to me. So we have, looks like eighteen speakers signed up to speak, both for and against, total, for and against the bill. So what we're gonna do is allot three minutes for each speaker. And I'm hoping at the end of that, there'll be an opportunity for members of the committee to ask questions for maybe about fifteen or twenty minutes. Of those who have spoken at the public hearing, I know some of our members have obligations to attend a subcommittee meeting that starts at ten thirty. So we're gonna try to wrap this by ten thirty. And Jared, are you gonna be my timekeeper for this?
Right.
All right. So the committee clerk, Jared Wire, will be the timekeeper. And we'll ask you not to go over, we'll go ahead and start. First person signed up to speak is Art Tom with West Virginia C D L. Just general rules for speakers, when our proceedings are being streamed live right now throughout the whole state of West Virginia, for anybody who is choosing to listen to this, so I will ask each speaker who approaches the mic to say his or her name and his or her affiliation. Mr. Tom, welcome.
Thank you Chairman Trump. Thank you Committee. Again, my name is Art Tom. I'm the Vice President and lobbyist for the West Virginia Citizens Defense League. February twenty seventh, two thousand and fifteen, at twelve twenty one P M, through the leadership of Chairman Trump, Chairman Blair, and Senate President Bill Cole, in a vote of thirty-two to two, the West Virginia Senate passed Senate Bill three forty-seven, or what was commonly referred to as constitutional carry. The Senate was direct, deliberate, and without hesitation when you made it clear that you support, that your support for West Virginians' constitutional rights was without waiver. You sent a message to those who have entrusted you with the power most may never understand that you reciprocated that trust and that you deserved that trust. With the push of that green button, you told nearly one million lawful gun owners in West Virginia that you believed in them. Fast forward to two thousand and sixteen legislative session, and it appears that some of you may have some doubts, be it from opposition or political posturing, here we are. I know you've encountered opposition from organizations funded by anti-gun billionaire and former New York mayor, Michael Bloomberg, and even from groups inside of the state with misunderstandings of the bill that lead them to fear the safety of law enforcement. Again, you have received opposition. I'd like to address a couple of these points, as others will here today. This bill creates neither benefit nor detriment to law enforcement's safety. The West Virginia State Police Academy trains every officer that passes through the academy to treat every encounter as an armed encounter. This bill will change absolutely nothing. I've heard potential concerns with a lack of training, that foregoing a training for covering a firearm would lead to the Wild West. The facts as of December two thousand and fifteen don't support those fears. When we look to the fact that border states like Pennsylvania, where West Virginia enjoys full reciprocity, have zero training requirements to obtain a permit, and that over one million sixty-four thousand three hundred and sixty active permits in the state of Pennsylvania, one can only speculate how many law-abiding permit holders are carrying in West Virginia every day. Yet I don't recall any headlines that read Pennsylvania permit holder creates carnage in neighbor state due to lack of training. That said, when we were asked to look into the ideas that may be available to calm those who may have had concerns with the lack of training, the W V C D L, together with the National Rifle Association, in a good faith measure, established a provisional permit system, a system that will produce a pool of trained gun owners starting at age eighteen. Some of you may or may not realize that House Bill forty-one forty-five was a bill born from the efforts of the W V C D L, the N R A, and Senator Craig Blair. Provisions within the bill were through the efforts of all parties and meetings that included Senate leadership, Senate counsel, and the West Virginia Sheriff's Association.
Mr. Tom?
Yes, sir.
You've reached three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, signed up is Keith Morgan.
I'm Keith Morgan with the West Virginia Citizens Defense League. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the committee. And I'm gonna shoot real hard for that three minute limit here. I wanna let you guys know that you're gonna hear what used to be five lies about this bill, now there will be six. The first one is officer safety. That's simply not true. Every officer in this state is trained that every contact with the public that you meet, that person is armed and dangerous until proven otherwise. To fail to treat the public as if they are armed is called complacency, and that's what gets officers killed. Nothing about this bill will change the way law enforcement works and the way they do business. Another lie you'll hear is anybody can carry a gun, felons, drug abusers, et cetera. Simply not true. We're not changing who's allowed, who's allowed to even possess a firearm. You'll hear that without training, there'll be rivers of bloods in the street. As Art pointed out, there's no training requirement for a license in Pennsylvania, and they're having no trouble, and they're having no trouble carrying here in West Virginia. You'll hear that we'll damage reciprocity. Simply not true. Our standard bill, our standard license remains in place, intact, and unchanged substantively. You'll hear that anyone who doesn't wanna go through the training and licensure can just open carry. Well, we've got numerous incidents throughout the state, including one that resulted in a successful lawsuit against the city of Wheeling, where law enforcement harasses open carriers because of a skittish public. They call in, law enforcement must respond. Then you're hearing that, well, we're gonna arm drug dealers from Detroit and from Columbus. Well, if they're dealing drugs, they're already committing a crime. Bust them for that. If they're not dealing drugs, they're just citizens from Detroit or Columbus exercising their Second Amendment rights. So I ask you to understand that these lies are out there, you're going to hear them, you're going to be attacked by them. And I want you to understand, too, you've been seeing some polls talking about support for this and that, and a bunch of the opposition. Well, I ask you to look around this committee and later on the floor, where is that opposition? We'll bring you hundreds of concerned West Virginia citizens who are out in the street, on their feet, and in this Capitol, working for their right to bear arms. I saw the opposition's lobby day, there were seven of them. So if you wanna know where West Virginians are, all you have to do is look around, we're here. And I thank you for your time.
Mr. Morgan, thank you. Our next speaker is Dakota Moore, to be followed by, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name, Gina Kirkpatrick.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the committee. My name is Dakota Moore. I'm here today on behalf of the National Rifle Association's Institute for Legislative Action to speak in support of House Bill forty-one forty-five. I think Keith and Art both did a great job of highlighting the issues that are associated with this bill, that have been raised. Obviously, many of those issues were brought forth on the House floor. I believe, due to the brevity of, that I have to make my comments, I would really say that my number-one utility is to address some of these questions. I know that there's a lot going around, primarily with the fact of training, I can tell you, and this has echoed in the previous speakers, that the entire reason that we created that provisional license is for, really, two. One of them is individuals between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one can go off and serve our countries, but they have no lawful mechanism by which they can carry a concealed weapon in the state of West Virginia legally. That needs to be done away with. But the second part is, the individuals between that age group are required to have the training. Therefore, they're confronted with the decision, after turning twenty-one, continue to avail themselves of the permitting system or permitless carry. If that is the case, then they will have already undergone that training that we believe is important. Just anecdotally speaking, it might come as a shock to most people that training requirements do not seem to have any effect on accidental discharges or accidents committed by individuals who have C P Ls in other states that do not require training. As a matter of fact, I've tried to run these numbers, and the numbers are simply immeasurable. They aren't there to even be diagnosed. Me personally, I have never undergone a training requirement that meets West Virginia's criteria. I work for the N R A. I shoot probably once a day down at a range, there's a range below my office. I've gone through every course, but none of those courses has sufficed in giving, provided a formal certificate, as is required under West Virginia law. I'm a competent marksman, and I think that that is indicative of what many people have worries about with regard to a training requirement, as opposed to being able to avail yourselves of a constitutional right without the necessity to do that. Training is expensive. It's cost prohibitive for some people. They can go to the range, pay their twenty-five dollars and buy the ammunition, but are they gonna be able to afford to go and pay a hundred and fifty dollars on top of another hundred-dollar fee to have their formal training and their, and the permitting fee, two hundred and fifty dollars to exercise a fundamental right to self-defense? That's what we're trying to get rid of. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman. I will stand for questions if anybody has any.
Mr. Moore, thank you. What we're gonna do, I think, is, if you can stick around to the end of our hearing, invite questions to any of our speakers and handle them then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for attending. Our next speaker is Gina Kirkpatrick, to be followed by Danielle Campbell. And I hope I said your name correctly.
That's okay. Good morning. My name is Joanna Kirkpatrick. I'm a resident of Canal County.
That's a no. Joanna Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
I apologize.
Not a problem at all. I am a member of the West Virginia Citizens Defense League, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'm also a licensed social worker with eighteen years of experience, and for the majority of my career, I've worked with low-income and physically disabled individuals and their families. I'm here to speak to you today to the very real issue that these people are not just burdened by the permit process, for many of them, it is prohibitive. The National Crime Victimization Survey shows us that both low-income and physically disabled people are more than twice as likely to be victims of a violent crime than those of the general population. Additionally, that same survey tells us that only one in three violent crimes occur in the home. I've heard a lot of assertions that people have the right to defend themselves in their home and that the permit process works well. These are people that deal with issues in their everyday lives related to resource allocation. They have to choose whether or not they can pay their light bill, their rent, or pay for a state sanctioned class, get the time off of a job that is often not flexible at all to go to not just the sheriff's office but the class, and there are multiple other accessibility issues. These are people who live in your districts and on a daily basis have to make the choice between defending themselves and taking responsibility for their own lives. They often live in higher crime or rural areas, not out of choice but out of necessity, and there are more likely to be issues there where they cannot protect themselves. So on a daily basis, what I'm asking is that those of you who have concerns about voter I D laws for not being able to afford a state I D would support this bill for the very same reason. These are law-abiding citizens who are not otherwise prohibited from carrying a pistol, but not only is it the cost of carrying a pistol, leaving your home, going to the sheriff's office, to a state sanctioned class, getting all of these things together, and getting additional training. These are resourceful, responsible people who will find ways to get training whether or not they're paying the full fee. So I would ask you to consider that today and just show these people that their lives are as valuable as yours. So thank you.
Ms. Kirkpatrick, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Danielle Campbell, to be followed by Dorsey Shreve, it looks like. Ms. Campbell.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Danielle Lori Campbell. I am a nurse, obviously a woman, and a mother. I am now a citizen of Ohio County, Wheeling, West Virginia. I moved here from the People's Republic of New Jersey in two thousand and ten. One of the first things I had to do when I moved here, because I wanted to carry a firearm, was come up with money to take a class that taught me nothing more than the parts of a gun, which I already knew, and then give a hundred dollars to my sheriff in order to carry my weapon concealed. It was definitely a slight financial hardship. Open carry is already legal in this state without any training. Why should I or any other law-abiding citizen have to pay anyone for our rights if we wanna put a coat on, or even worse, prevent my own rape? As for training that everyone opposed to this bill is complaining about, West Virginia's open carry, as I said, requires no training. Pennsylvania has no training for a concealed carry permit. Ten minutes and twenty dollars and you have your permit. As for officer's safety, just as in the healthcare field, standard precautions treats everyone as if they're infected. Our officers are trained that everyone encountered should be treated as if armed. This bill in no way allows anyone who is already prohibited to carry to carry because this bill passes. A criminal is still a criminal regardless of this bill, and we all know they don't follow the laws. Shall not be infringed. There's no ambiguity there. I urge you to vote in favor of House Bill forty-one forty-five intact with no amendments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Our next speaker is Dorsey Shreve, to be followed by, hmm, Patrick Moore. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Dorsey Shreve. I am a son of West Virginia, a husband, an I T business owner, a professor of science and math, and more pertinent to why we are here today, a firearms instructor with N R A certification. Let's start off with discussing statistics. Anyone can make up statistics to say what they want and how they want it by choosing selective data sets, modeling methods, and et cetera, and for that reason, I'm only going to offer you raw, uninterpreted data. Open carry has no training requirements, as we know, in the state of West Virginia, and any non-prohibited individual age eighteen or over can already open carry. It's been legal in West Virginia since eighteen sixty-three with no incidents on record in a hundred and fifty-three years. There have been attempts to marginalize and discriminate against open carriers. However, is it okay to do so to a minority of shooters who are practicing constitutionally protected right? So we'll focus on why minimum training requirements are bad. In the book The Psychology of Action: Linking Cognition and Motivation to Behavior, Dr. Peter Giewitzer and Dr. John Bahr discuss the psychological effects of having a minimum standard in place that most will only do enough to meet the minimum requirements, and only a few that want to exceed the minimum requirements will do so for a personal goal. They will not pursue any further training, education, or requirement standard. This can be evidenced by two issues, or by issues with two major law enforcement agencies. First, we'll touch on the N Y P D. In December twelfth, two thousand and eleven, New York Daily News, N Y P D was telling officers to not use certain weapons for off-duty carry because the triggers were too light. In two thousand and ten, there were twenty-one negligent discharges, only six in which involved a perpetrator. In two thousand and nine, there were twenty-three negligent discharges, only eight of which involved a perpetrator. On August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve, Reuters article was discussing bystanders wounded in an Empire State shooting. Nine of the bystanders were shot in an attempt to apprehend a suspect. The N Y P D tried to blame spalling or fragmentation from hollow point bullets ricocheting into bystanders when all received direct gunshot wounds. In the December fourth, two thousand and thirteen, New York Times, unarmed man is charged with wounding bystanders. Two bystanders were shot while police were trying to apprehend another suspect. Both the two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen incidents, the real culprit was a result of a lack of training on heavier triggers due to a lack of training on lighter triggers. They tried to legislate a different trigger in hopes of solving a substandard training requirement. Now, per the Training Bureau of the N Y P D Police Academy, officers are required to qualify twice a year, and that still was not enough. In L A County Sheriff's Department on June thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, L A Times, they discussed a rise in accidental gunshots in L A County deputies following new firearms.
Mr. Shreve.
Oh, out of time.
Three minutes. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patrick Moore, to be followed by Patty Hamilton.
Thank you Chairman Trump and Committee. My name is Patrick Moore. I'm here representing the West Virginia Citizens Defense League. I'm a father of two. I'm a husband. I'm a pharmacist, and I'm a lifelong resident of West Virginia. When I first decided to speak, I wanted to speak my mind, but my support for the bill will be obvious just by the outfit that I'm wearing today. So after some thought, I decided to speak for a couple folks who could not be here. We hear that officers oppose this bill. We hear they oppose it for safety reasons. We hear duty to notify in our conversations about this bill. In response to those claims, I offer the following direct quotes from two officers of two different levels of law enforcement. First quote is, "It's always nice when a person notifies me that they are carrying. I consider it a courtesy. It helps me feel the person is trying to be honest and open, which is always a plus. However, I don't see a need for it to be law. We are supposed to assume every encounter is with an armed person, and in truth, every encounter has a weapon involved, ours at the very least." It's a lie to say opposition to this bill is about safety. Joe Citizen can open carry a weapon without a permit and without training, but we are gonna charge him one hundred dollars to allow him to put his T-shirt down over that weapon. It's a scam under the guise of safety, and even if there was a real safety issue at heart, remember the words of Ben Franklin, "Those that sacrifice freedom for security deserve neither." Allowing permitless carry would not cause anyone to get away with carrying a weapon that is not allowed to carry a weapon now. Next quote is, "I do understand the lack of permit fees will not help the sheriff's departments, but really, all a concealed carry permit fee is, is a tax." In fact, in a two thousand and thirteen survey of fifteen thousand officers, ninety-one percent said that concealed carry should be permitted to citizens, quote, "without question and without further restrictions." A recently released Crime Research Prevention Center study on academics and concealed carry in the United States shows that economists even, the consensus is overwhelmingly that concealed carry lowers crime. The study surveyed fifty economists. More than four-fifths of the economists agree that guns in the U S are used for self-defense more than for crime, and three out of four agree that concealed carry in the United States lowers murder rate. Recently, in a Gallup poll in October of two thousand and fifteen, fifty-six percent Americans say more concealed weapons would make the country safer. This bill will not alter standard operating procedure for officers in the field. It will not alter who is currently prohibited from carrying a gun, and will enhance penalties for those that do not, that do commit crimes with a firearm. I support this bill, House Bill forty-one forty-five, and I ask that it be passed through the Senate as it was passed by the House without amendment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker will be Patty Hamilton, followed by, looks like Dudley Brown.
Thank you. I'm Patty Hamilton, representing the West Virginia Association of Counties, and I appreciate this opportunity to once again support our law enforcement who are opposed to House Bill forty-one forty-five due to concerns for officer's safety and for public safety. I spoke at the public hearing both last year and this year in the House of Delegates, and I realize it may be a foregone conclusion, since it passed last year, that it will pass this year, even though polls show that approximately eighty-five percent of West Virginians support the current permit process. The reason I'm speaking here today is that I would be remiss if I didn't try to correct some misinformation that I'm seeing on social media and in various comments to posts on social media. I've seen remarks that indicate that proponents of this bill don't all seem to understand that it does not do away with concealed weapons permit process, and in fact, the process remains totally intact. Why does the concealed weapons permit process remain totally intact in its entirety if a permit is no longer required in West Virginia? The simple answer is reciprocity. If West Virginia passes this bill, we will join a very small minority of states that allow permitless concealed carry. Last year, those states were Wyoming, Alaska, Arizona, and Vermont. This year, Kansas was added to that list beginning on July first. I've read that Maine has also, but I haven't confirmed that, but it seems to be no more than six, maybe seven states, none of which are contiguous to West Virginia. Every one of our border states has a requirement for a concealed weapons permit. Why is this important? Thirty of West Virginia's fifty-five counties are border counties. If any person carries a concealed weapon into those border states and doesn't have a person, that person can go from being a law-abiding citizen to a convicted felon. A quick shopping trip, go into a restaurant, go into a movie, even go into your job if it's in another state, can become a criminal action if you are carrying a concealed weapon into Ohio, Kentucky, Maryland, Pennsylvania, or Virginia, and you don't have a permit. Of course, the reverse is not true. West Virginians cannot go into any border states or into most states carrying concealed weapon without a permit, but this bill allows anyone who's not a prohibited person to carry a concealed weapon into West Virginia. Even Wyoming law restricts permitless concealed carry to Wyoming residents only. Since thirty of our fifty-five counties are border counties, where our residents frequently and easily go back and forth to a neighboring state, and since most states require a permit to carry a concealed weapon, one has to ask, who does this bill benefit? Mostly, it seems to benefit non-West Virginians who want to bring concealed weapons into this state. Our own West Virginia residents will still have to obtain a permit in order to lawfully make even the briefest trip to a neighboring state with a concealed weapon.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Three minutes.
I've made my point. Thank you.
Thank you for your appearance here today. The next speaker is Dudley Brown, to be followed by Frank Hartman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Dudley Brown. I'm president of the National Association for Gun Rights, and I'm based out of Colorado. Came here for the good snow, obviously. On behalf of our more than five million members and supporters nationwide, I encourage you to pass this bill without amendments, and since time is of the essence to refuse all amendments. I think we've got a nexus of people supporting this bill in its current forum, and we don't wanna jeopardize it by changing it. Now, unlike the previous speaker, this is not my first discussion on constitutional carry. I've been a gun lobbyist and representing gun owners for twenty-three years now, and I started out on this issue itself. This was the very first issue. As many states started debating shall issue concealed carry, we always held out that constitutional carry, or what we used to call Vermont law, was, was the standard, the highest standard. Now, back then, in those days, in the early nineties, it was very difficult to even get a hearing on a bill or a vote in many state legislatures on, on this concept of the Vermont law. And that has changed dramatically. In fact, some people who were ostensibly firearms advocates said that it would never pass anywhere. It was originally, and no criminal penalty in the state of Vermont, and therefore, it was since the inception of the state, but no other state would pass that. And then Alaska did, and then other states. And yes, Maine passed one last year, which we were quite involved in. Now, really, this is, as one of the previous speakers said, a tax. The tax is on having a coat or covering a firearm. And that's why we think it's a great mantra to say, let's repeal the coat tax. There's really no reason, and there's no statistical data to show, that this will actually even reduce the number of people who get permits. In fact, in many states in which they leave the permit process in place, which all of them have, it actually increases the number of people who get permits, because get people interested in it. There's not this barrier to entry to get training and pay for the permit and this, and then they go, okay, I can carry now, I'd like to have some reciprocity. So they acquire the permit, go through the trouble of doing that as well. We just don't think it should be a requirement. Now, you've heard all the arguments, and so all I wanted to tell you was, today, our staff and volunteers will be delivering more than eighty-five hundred petitions to members of the Senate, and I actually brought, had the trouble of bringing for Senator Trump, constituents here have signed petitions urging you to pass forty-one forty-five, and I think you will. And thank you very much.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much. And if you'll deliver that, yeah, well done. We'll get it to the clerk to distribute. The next speaker is Frank Hartman, to be followed by Terry Storer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. My name is Frank Hartman. I'm a contract lobbyist, and I'm here on behalf of my client, the West Virginia Association of Counties. I genuinely did not intend to speak today, and I've made a few notes in the hallway, but all, as a lobbyist, I'm a pragmatist. I recognize that this bill is going to pass, but I think the Senate has the ability to significantly improve it. You have a room full of people, of citizens, who are clearly very interested in this bill, and you have a room full of people who, the most of whom have a concealed weapon permit already, and they're here to tell you, even though they already have a concealed weapons permit, how onerous it has been for them to do that. And some of them make some good point. It's a fair point that if there is a financial obligation or if it is overly burdensome, there's an easy way for this committee to fix that. Do away with... Do away with any of the fees. Let the counties eat that. On behalf of my group, one of the Association of Counties, the Sheriff's Association and the Prosecuting Attorneys Association are members of that group, just eat, just do away with the fees. And then what you're left standing with is a permit process that is a safety class, that you're regulating the safety. Most of these people in here have grown up around guns. They're safe with guns. They know about guns. I don't doubt that at all. And the safety course probably is repetitive for most of them, but it seems to be a reasonable regulation of that fact. We can't, as a society, just hope that everybody knows what they're doing. The whole fundamental premise of a good guy with a gun stopping a bad guy with a gun is that the good guy knows what they're doing. And it may be a worthless safety class, but it is really the bare minimum we can do in West Virginia to help provide for the safety of my family when I'm going to Lowe's and walking among a crowd of people, some of whom have guns, some of whom don't. We're just asking West Virginia to be reasonable in its regulation, moderate, middle of the road. There's nothing wrong with those sorts of balanced things. If you enact this legislation, you will put West Virginia in a severe and strict and radical minority of states, and that's not where we want to be as a state. If the regulation is burdensome, that's, for law-abiding citizens, that's exactly the way regulations work. That's the way all laws work. Law-abiding people follow the laws, and so that is onerous among law-abiding people. People who file their taxes, that is onerous. For people who don't file their taxes, not so onerous. For those of you who follow speed limits, that's onerous. If you don't obey the speed limit, not so onerous. That's the way regulations work. So we're just implore and ask that this committee consider, consider the option, consider law enforcement's point of view, consider the option of fixing this bill and doing away with the fees, and all you're going to be left with then is a safety course. We think that's very important and something this committee should consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Terry Storer, to be followed by Randy McGill.
My name is Terry Storer, and I'm from Jefferson County, West Virginia. I'm a mom, I'm a wife, I'm a woman, and I support this bill. I had a whole speech drawn up. I'm going to toss some of it out the window. One of the ladies prior to me said about 85% in favor of the current permit process. That was probably the one last year. It had about 400 people polled to answer that 83%. Whereas if you looked on the Journal or the Gazette-Mail, there were about, there were a couple thousand, and out of the couple thousand, there were about 89% in favor of the bill. Another thing is constitutional carry. There are seven states that currently have it. Out of the seven is Vermont, which not only are no, is no training required and no permits are issued, they also allow 16-year-olds to carry without training, without a permit, and under 16, you need permission. We haven't heard any blood running through the streets. We haven't heard any children bleeding out in front of us. And there are also six states that have a limited form of constitutional carry. That makes 13, yeah, 13 states that have some form of constitutional carry. We've also had 20 states, one of us being West Virginia, that has introduced legislation but either did not pass or, like last year, got vetoed due to misinformation. Officer safety, they're already supposed to treat people as though they're armed. We've heard that. One of my favorite quotes by Art Tom is, "The Second Amendment says we can, so just assume we are." This is the, this is the United States. We have the Second Amendment. We also have West Virginia Constitution, Article 322, that pretty much says we can, we should be able to have the right to keep and bear arms. Thank you.
Ms. Storer, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Randy McGill, to be followed by Joe Crawford.
Chairman Trump and honorable members of this committee, it is truly an honor to be here, and I thank you for this extraordinary meeting. I want to speak from a personal standpoint about the issue of training. I'm a resident of Mason County, West Virginia, and have been here since 2001. My family is from West Virginia, and in fact, settled West Virginia in 1750, so we've been here quite a while. But in 1987, I moved from the state of West Virginia with my job, I'm a healthcare professional, a nurse and esoteric, to the state of Nevada. And Nevada at that point in time did not have must-issue concealed carry. I had been around guns all my life, rifles and long guns, but I'd never been around handguns much at all. And I wanted to start carrying a handgun. But realizing that I didn't have extensive knowledge of handguns, I thought it would behoove me to learn all that I could before I started carrying. So I enrolled at a local community college where they taught criminal justice courses, and part of that was a concealed carry and a handgun course for police officers. And there was beginning, intermediate, and advanced. After going through all those and earning three credits, I thought, is this a great country or what? But on the final course, the advanced course, I was training side by side with police officers on the police range. And by the time I finished that course and started carrying a handgun openly, because Nevada had open carry, it was just not, not must-issue for concealed carry. I felt qualified, and I did that not because there was a state mandate that I get training, but that because I felt responsible. My dad taught me, with much freedom comes much responsibility. And if I'm going to carry a gun as a gun owner, I think I have the responsibility to get that training. No state legislation, no amount of pressure can force anybody to do that. You can take a course and learn nothing, but if you're interested and invested in the course, you will learn. I think my experience as a handgun carrier, I have a concealed carry in the state of Nevada, I think is typical of most gun owners and most CCW carriers, and I think most gun owners who will carry concealed regardless of permit or not will seek that training regardless of what legislation you pass. And I'd like to think that every time I put that gun on, as a responsible citizen of the state, I'll never have to use it. And that's the mindset that I carry. But I practice, and I practice all the time, because you perform the way you practice. And I thank you very much for hearing me, and I'll turn the mic back to the next speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joe Crawford, to be followed by Kathy Kraus, it looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Joe Crawford. I'm governor of the Chief of Police at Yeager Airport. I represent the West Virginia Chiefs of Police Association and the West Virginia Fraternal Order of Police. I'm the state vice president there, and I'm an executive board member of the Chiefs. And I come to you this morning just with a couple thoughts that I think, I'm going to disagree a little bit that there, you know, some on the other side say that it's not an officer safety issue, and I submit to you there is. But the common sense is, or maybe a like thereof, I believe, you know, last year, we came to the table, there was some consensus on some of the amendments that came in this bill last year. Obviously, the governor vetoed it. This year, we were never brought to the table. We had one meeting, and we voiced our concerns there. But basically, I think, from our standpoint is, is, common sense is this. You know, put some language in there about the declaration. If a law enforcement officer approaches you, there ought to be language in there where they have to declare to that law enforcement officer that they're carrying a weapon. Even though we may assume, we may know, because here's, here's where it gets sticky. If they don't declare, then there's a violation and we can charge them. And it goes into the other officer safety issue. The other, the other piece is, some will submit to you and tell you that, you know, there's only one state that only allows their state residents to carry, and I think there's some debate or some conversations going on whether it's constitutional or not. Well, if it's constitutional for Wyoming, why couldn't it be constitutional for the state of West Virginia? If it needs to be hammered out in court, so be it. The two common sense issues is, make the declaration when law enforcement approaches you, that, I think common sense tells you, I think that should be one of the things in this bill. The other part is, you know, state residents. If you look at the west side of Charleston, and you look at downtown Huntington, and you look at Rand, there's shootings going on every day. Which leads me into a couple situations that I think probably for debate that maybe ought to be discussed, but, you know, you've got a police officer out here in the middle of the night, 2:00 in the morning, responding to a call. They, they go to a call, maybe shots fired, whatever the case may be, and they go up and approach several individuals, maybe in that area where the call originated. The issue being is, we develop reasonable suspicion based on what we see, what we hear, and the information we're provided. So if we go up and approach an individual and we see that there's a, there's a bulge or there's something that gives us reasonable suspicion that that subject may be carrying a firearm, so we go up and, Terry versus Ohio says, we can, we can do a stop and frisk for our personal safety, our officer's safety. I submit to you, I think there may be challenges and issues that arise out of Terry versus Ohio issue. That's probably to be debated at a later date, but I submit to you, from law enforcement standpoint, that's a concern for us. So, you know, with, with that being said, I just want this body to look at some of the amendments. Last year, there was consensus on some of these amendments. They're not there this year.
Mr. Crawford, that's three minutes.
So I submit to you, take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Kathy Kraus, to be followed by Amber Perry.
Good morning, everyone. Hope you all had, are warm after your cold, snow-filled ride in this morning. I'm Kathy Hes Kraus, and I would like to tell you why I support House Bill 4145. First, let me take a moment to tell you a little about myself. I'm a wife and a mom of five. I currently homeschool our youngest two children. Our older boys, there's three of them, they've all graduated, starting their own lives. One serves our country as a United States sailor, and I figure if he can protect our constitution and freedoms for our country, the least I can do is protect them here at home. I have watched the blood, sweat, and tears that have been put into this bill. This is what West Virginians want. This is what I want. As a woman who has her kids all the time, no matter where we go, I am their protector. I have been given the job by God to raise and protect my kids and my family, and our founding fathers said that I had the God-given right to do so. There was no fee attached to it to protect my children, myself, or my family. There was no buts on that to those God-given rights. It was acknowledged second and only after our freedoms of religion and speech. I should not have to pay for this right. I am not charged to speak my mind, and thank goodness I'm not, or I would be broke. Why should I be charged to protect my family? I have also heard all the lies about this bill and what it will do. It will not allow just anyone to carry. Prohibited persons will still be prohibited. Reciprocity will not be lost. Concealed carry permits are not going away. It is protect, it is predicted that they may even go up in numbers, so that the people may enjoy the reciprocity with dozens of states that accept our permits. I find that this, the permit fees pry on women. We are the ones that have a hard time open carrying. If you look at what I'm wearing today, tell me exactly where I can open carry at easily. We are the ones that have our kids. It's easier to put our guns away and have it hidden so we're not scaring everybody. Women who carry are growing in numbers daily. The requirement for concealed carry permits take advantage of so many of these women often. Often in domestic situations, these women have to leave the relationships, they have to take care of their kids, purchase food, pay house payments, take care of utilities. Now, you ask those same women, women, to take $200 out of their family's mouths, shelter, and clothing, just so they can protect themselves and keep their guns out of sight. I also need to ask, have you ever tried to open carry in a dress? It's not an easy thing to do. We have to have alternatives because of the clothes we wear. I also hate hearing that all the kids will be unsafe because people are carrying everywhere. My kid's teacher and principal carry daily, and I can guarantee you, they are perfectly safe and well-protected.
Ms. Kraus, that's three minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Amber Perry, to be followed by Philip Williamson.
Good morning. I'm nervous. And everybody has done such a great job of saying most of what's on my paper, so I'm going to try to kind of piece it together, what I think was missed. I'm Amber Perry from Mason County. And what has become known as the gun debate, it seems like women are often included in only two categories, as victims and as statistics, and that is just not what I am seeing. What I am seeing is that women are the fastest-growing demographic in the firearms and self-defense communities. Groups like the Well-Armed Woman are popping up throughout the country, including a local chapter in Charleston. These groups offer regular monthly meetings where women can learn firearm safety, discuss issues specific to women and firearms, as well as practice live fire at local gun ranges. These groups do not exist because you've legislated that they must. They exist because women have the desire to training, and they're seeking it out in record numbers. And I am here like Kathy today to represent the women of this state who are taking on this responsibility, and I agree, it can be a financial hardship particularly to women. As far as state sanctioned training, how many of you learned to handle a firearm at home with your family member when you were a kid? I think there's no reason to have to have it state sanctioned. I think many of us have learned from family members, from responsible friends, and since this law only applies to people who can lawfully possess a firearm, all it is doing is removing the crime of putting on a coat without first paying a five-year lease on the right to protect my own body. Women have shown up to this debate, and we have shown up overwhelmingly on the pro-gun side. There are two falsehoods I want to address in closing. First, that only men care about gun rights. Clearly, today, you see, that is false. Second, that carrying a firearm concealed equates to murderous intent. Nothing could be further from the truth. I carry a firearm because I want to protect my own body from battery, from kidnapping, and from rape, and I do not know why the legislature believes that they can regulate my ability to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Philip Williamson, to be followed by Jason, looks like Means. Philip Williamson to be followed by Jason Means. I apologize again if I'm mispronouncing the name.
Thank you, Senator Trump, and thank you, members of the Judiciary Committee. You've heard pretty much every argument there is to hear on this bill today. I would like to address a couple things, though. It's been said that today that a small number of states, if we pass this, we would be joining a very small number. I ran the number just back here, if we become the ninth state to conceal carry, that's almost 20%. That's not a small number in my mind. The other thing is definitely officer safety. I recently heard, in fact, it was just this past week, a state police officer say that the bad guys are always going to use a firearm for bad things, and that it's only fair that we level the playing field for the law-abiding citizens who are going to use them for good. My argument is pretty much the West Virginia Constitution. Article 322, "A person has the right to keep and bear arms for the defense of self, family, home, and state, and for lawful hunting and recreational use." It doesn't say that I should be charged to feed, to keep and bear arms, or that I definitely have to have training to keep and bear arms, or that if the chief law enforcement officer from my county decides that I can, that I can keep and bear arms. It states that as a law-abiding citizen, I am guaranteed the right to defend myself, my family, and state at any given time without any questions asked, according to our state and I believe our federal constitutions. As a voter of Chapmanville, West Virginia, I urge you to pass HB 4145 without amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jason Means, I guess, to be followed by Connor Meadows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it's, my name is Jason Means, and I'm a resident here of Canal County. I'm a proud member of the West Virginia Citizens Defense League, which I view as one of the most important grassroots organizations in the state. I'm an NRA-certified basic pistol instructor, which is the class that is mandated by the state in order to obtain concealed handgun license. I'm also an NRA-certified chief range safety officer, and I refuse to be a victim seminar presenter. Many of the anti-groups have, or anti-gun groups have predicted that if constitutional carry passes into law here in West Virginia, that blood will fill our streets. Accidental and/or negligent discharges will become a common Accidental and/or negligent discharges will become a common occurrence, and that bodies will be stacked to the sky. As predicted, this is a lie made by whole cloth. If you look at other constitutional carry states, this is not the case. The acts of violence and mayhem predicted by anti-guners have not occurred, and in fact, those states have some of the lowest crime rates in the nation. It has been said that if our training requirement is removed, there will be an increase in violence. Once again, this is another lie. If you look at the statistical data from CDC between states that have the highest bar for training, states that have the lowest bar for training, or no bar at all, those numbers remain the same. Let's take a look at a few of our surrounding states. Ohio and Pennsylvania, for example. Ohio mandates a twelve-hour training class, West Virginia an eight-hour, and Pennsylvania requires none. No training whatsoever is required in Pennsylvania to obtain a concealed handgun license, and we share reciprocity with them. A person would assume, based on these figures, Ohio would be the safest state of the three, West Virginia would be next in line and slightly less safe, and that the people of Pennsylvania would be killing each other off in droves. However, if you view the statistics from the CDC between these three states, the percentage of negligent or accidental discharges are virtually equal. There is no statistical data to substantiate the claim that government-mandated firearms training actually makes you safer. It might make you feel safer, but that's all that it does. It's nothing more than placebo. If you look at the current constitutional carry states, firearms instructors are booked solid. Their number's increasing after the passage of similar legislation. As more people take advantage of their constitutionally guaranteed rights, both state and federal, to own and carry a firearm, interest in training increases, and knowledge of safe firearm use abounds. Many in the anti-gun community consider this a law of unintended consequences, and if this bill passes, chaos and mayhem will occur. The opposition asserts that law-abiding citizens discreetly carrying firearms will make citizens become unglued. There is no evidence to support this assertion, none. Due to personal misconceptions and poor stereotypes brought about by Hollywood, anti-gun groups project those fears on law-abiding citizens without proper cause. In closing, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today.
Thank you very much. The last speaker we have signed up is Connor Meadows.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, board members. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all today. I'm probably the youngest person coming before you today. I'm twenty-two years old. I've had my concealed carry license for about a year. I'm a NRA-certified instructor, and I want to let you all know that before I was twenty-one years old, I had no realistic option of defending myself in Charleston and Huntington, where, where I attended Marshall University and where I'm continuing to be a student at West Virginia State University. I know you all are thinking, well, what about open carry? I will tell you all that anybody that has been in my position, being eighteen to twenty years old, having the choice of open carrying a firearm or not carrying a firearm at all, you always go with not carrying a firearm at all because the strategic and tactical disadvantages of open carry is basically countless. There's no advantage of open carry. So I want to implore you all to pass the bill as it states, because it will certify people that are eighteen years old to receive training that I already had once I was eighteen years old, to get that training and then have their ability to concealed carry a firearm with the permit. And as an NRA instructor, I want to implore you all to pass this bill requiring no training, because if you take the financial incentive away from, of getting your instruction, it will open up the opportunity for citizens to better defend themselves. You're talking about, right now, as the law states, spending almost a thousand dollars between getting your handgun and getting your firearm, everything you need to concealed carry, and your training and your permit. A thousand dollars. Fifty percent of Americans make less than thirty thousand dollars a year. West Virginia consistently is one of the poorest states in the nation. Not a lot of people have talked about that today. And as a lifelong West Virginia citizen, I don't like to talk about it. But you start talking about three to five percent of a person's income being to defend themselves, are they going to spend that other ten percent income tithing to their church or buying their children Christmas gifts? So I want to implore you all that, as the bill states, West Virginia citizens will be able to defend themselves, and the money that they sit, the money that they save from not having to go through the laws that they currently have, then they can put that down the road when they have the money and the financial means to contact an instructor like me and say, hey, please help me. I'd really like to learn how to defend myself. Every time I go out, I have people bothering me, saying, please, give me this training. And when I tell them how much it costs, they say, well, that's as much as what I spent on groceries for two weeks, or something like that. So I, I want you all to understand that the state of West Virginia, when you all are talking about passing or failing this bill, the economy of this state dictates that you have to consider the economic means of the citizens that you represent, okay? And, and that's really all I have to say. I really appreciate you all taking the time to hear me out.
Mr. Meadows, thank you. I'd like to, on behalf of the committee, thank all of the people who've chosen to attend our hearing today and who've signed up to speak and have spoken. What we'll do now is, we will open it up for questions by members of the committee, and for, I'd like each member, if he has, he or she has a question, to identify which of our speakers you'd like to direct the question to, and we'll draw that speaker back to the podium. Are there members of the committee that have any questions? I'm not seeing lights. Let me, I have one question. I'm going to start the questioning. And my question is for Mr. Crawford, if he's still here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crawford, I think you were the speaker that mentioned or suggested a duty to declare.
Yes.
Do you, is it your belief that that should apply to people who are carrying without a permit if this bill passes, as well as people who are carrying with a concealed carry permit?
I'd like to see the declaration regardless.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for any of the speakers who gave their time to talk to us today? If not, then I'll say again, on behalf of the whole committee, thank all of you for coming. I recognize the senator from Ohio County.
Mr. Chairman, a move we adjourn.
Questions on the chairman. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The motion's adopted. We are adjourned.